Which is right there at the street, uh, the connector and then the existing barn. So just quickly jumping to a lot more detail and information. It filling out the whole site for what's proposed. So the proposal is to have a two car garage. At the street and a new thirty by fifty four barn. What's happening is the connector is in poor condition for remaining approximately twelve feet. That'll be pulled off and then this new barn will be pushed up against the existing connector, which has a screen porch. And a shed roof upstairs to provide additional bedroom space and storage space that'll all remain. Um, so the whole barn actually, even though it's getting wider, it slides to the south. Uh, by about six feet or so, maybe just under, yeah, just under that. Um. There's the new barn there at the top, the existing connector, the walkways are all there, the curb cut is also there. And utilities will still enter into the main house. Um. Power is going to be supplied. Uh, there's a telephone pole. That is just to the west of the new parking area.
Yeah.
At that point right there is where the power will go underground. The house is also served by a power pole that's on the neighbor's property, but that's just seems to be internet services that come in from that side. That's all to the south. So the program for this new barn is going to be a two car garage at the street entry point. That will look like a bar, we'll get into the elevations, but that'll look like a barn still, albeit a bit bigger. There'll be a, a one, well, one bed, basically a one bedroom apartment. On the ground floor with a screen porch on the backside. That's the piece centered, uh, heading off toward the stream on the east. The new entry, shared entry. Is right on the north side of the barn adjacent to the parking spaces. The second floor of the barn will be two more one bedroom apartments. Shared entry, shared stairway, all separated. Appropriately with firewalls and it's all new construction. So that brings it, the property to three bed, uh, three units. Uh, rentable and then the single family will remain a single family home. So that's an increase of units on the property, uh, by two total. The, what we've done, uh, I'll walk you through kind of the parking and some of the features of the site and the topography. Changes, there'll be some new plantings at the street. Uh, particularly in the northwest corner and along the north property line, provided four spots. Three are necessary for the three apartments. But we've, we added one additional one, we're not quite at the, you know, four and then. But we've, we have space, so we did it there. The trash pickup is kind of behind the trees, just to the west of the parking spots. There's the bins for the apartments and. You could even store the single family residences trash there too, if you'd like, but although that's likely to just be in the barn and pulled to the curb for pickup. Um, we've taken advantage of the slope and the topography to grade a swale in to go to a collection area. That's on the north property line that'll allows to push snow off. And, and snow, and plow that whole area and just push it off to there. And then the collection area might need to be expanded a little bit more, just to be sure. But, uh, that area is intended to get, to collect, uh, so runoff. Um, a couple more plantings along the entry and there'd be a covered entrance there on the eve side, the north eve sided of, of the barn right there. Um. And yeah, that's, that's the site. Those are where the utilities come from. Um. And. Oh, the width, the width is twenty four clear and then skinny's up slightly to exit. Although we, we have super close to twenty four, uh, right now at the current curb cut. But it, it remains and it just shifts slightly south. Um, there's a dash line that shows how it originally was in front of the barn, which was about twenty two feet. Uh, at the, at the curb. So we're shifting it just toward the south because the whole barn shifts to the south slightly. Um, but. The point of this was that we wanted to achieve the parking, the entrance point and everything. For the cars, um, without adding another curb cut. It just didn't seem, it didn't seem totally necessary in this case. Uh, there's some new, um. Water collection feature on the front of the barn there, like a trench drain or something similar to collect runoff. Cause right now it runs off and goes into the barn and drops down. So we want to eliminate that and make some improvements, uh, to runoff.
Um, so what's this?
That's the screen porch for the first floor residence. It's got a couple more features, that first floor. Um, so that's what that is there and it's a single story screen porch. And then we can go to the elevation, we'll just explain the look. So to the right is the existing house that'll remain. The middle, this sketch was a prior proposal to tear down the entire connector. We're no longer going to do that, but the, the distance, which is twenty four will remain, so it, it'll be twenty four feet. For the connector, then the new barn on your left hand side, that's what the barn is going to look like. Um. Traditional like kind of barn door look for the garage, a little cover, roof covering above that. And then those windows are windows for one of the apartments. When you come up the stairs, the stairs is basically, uh, you get to the top landing and one apartment off to the east. Uh, and then one apartment to the west like street side. Um, so that's the layout. And that's the look. This is the basic heights. You can see the height limits thirty five, it's right up close to that. Um, but, um, I'm taking that from right down at the pavement for the height. And. Yeah, all the floors match up to the existing house. Um. And it's, it's a fairly tall house, um, but the barn will be a little bit taller than that, just to make construction straightforward. But that's the look, the ideas of traditional vernacular connected farmhouse that we're all familiar with in the area. There's numerous examples on the street, the house was that and it will be that in the future. Uh, so it, it makes a lot of attempts to, um, look contextual and be contextual. Uh, right now, the barn just being stored, it's really underutilized and I think it's important that we reconsider things like that. In the town, if at all possible. Um, and this is a, a good opportunity to add some housing to the area. In a nice, I won't say old barn because it's not, but.
Any questions for Chris? What's the height of the barn?
Um, so it's, so you have nine, four, eight, that's seventeen, well, the, the first floor is up quite a bit on this house. So there's about two there. So it's seventeen foot four, nineteen foot four, and then you have, uh. Fifteen feet, so. It's just about thirty five, it's just underneath.
Yeah, did that, um, thirty five foot limit, did that pose it, pose any, uh, compromises?
No, I don't think so. I still need to go back and do some verifications. It's, it's quite possible that the existing house is something between a ten, twelve and a twelve, twelve. I've found that a lot of these old timber frame structures tend to be some number in between that. The barn right now in this sketch is drawn at a true twelve, twelve. So I think we would be able to move things down a little bit to create a little bit of breathing room. Um. Anyway, yeah, that's, that's in my experience, it's some sort of strange number in between all those.
Will this just be attic space up here?
Yeah, that'll, that'll be attic storage space. And we, it's a flat roof up at second, second level for the apartments to create. Then I can easily do egress windows, uh, for safety and fire egress for the bedrooms and everything up there. It's much easier to do that than put it in dormers and have to deal with. A bunch of different heights.
How was the attic access?
So that'll be probably accessed by some sort of locking panel at the top landing in the staircase. I didn't include the floor plans because it wasn't sort of relevant for this discussion, but. At the top, there's a shared landing at the top of the staircase, a stair going up. And right there could be a pull down ladder for the stair. It'd be locked, of course, because it's for the residents.
Yeah.
That hall, that stairway button.
You had a question? I think I saw your hand.
Uh, yeah, um, so in terms of. The overall concept as a, as a multi-family conversion, this is nicely developed.
Yeah.
And it looks like New England, it, it fits the context of, of the town of Enfield and, and that neighborhood. I guess if we go back to the site plan itself, A zero two. I'll say that, that my challenge in reviewing the site plan. Was the reliance on GIS boundaries or the actual boundaries. And there's a lot happening in the northwest corner of the property. Um. GIS boundaries are really good at a town level, at a neighborhood level. But sometimes when you focus on this level of granularity, individual parcel, those boundaries could be off from reality by feet. And if you look at the parking areas in particular around P one. These are nine by eighteen parking spaces, which are the smallest allowable under our regulations and P one looks to be. Pretty close to the setback line, maybe a foot away, even with the smaller parking space size. It's hard for me to rely on GIS boundaries. Given the potential error in those boundaries to be able to kind of. Say with confidence that there wouldn't be an encroachment, um, in the setback if those boundaries were. Submeter off as GIS tends to be. So I guess what I'm saying is I have a little bit of heartburn with the request to not have surveyed boundary lines as part of this site plan.
Chris? I, I believe you're allowed to, you can use the, like, the setback for whatever you want, like. You could, you could even put a shed in the setback. There's the maximum size for a shed. I think you can go to a hundred square feet. For a shed inside the setback area, so we felt that, um. With the fact that this was just parking and we're actually going to be improving the characteristics of the lot line. With some added plantings that we were okay in, uh, that being a little close with the house. The barn is getting, because of the angle of the house related to the street, that actually is going away from each other. They're like the diverging lines, so, uh, we, we felt confident enough in the existing conditions. Uh, out at, out at the site and on the map matching, because the new is. Even the existing diverges away from the lot line and the setback line, so we felt comfortable there. And that would be the real hiccup, right? Be the building itself, yeah, not the parking.
I think, maybe I'm not reading the zoning ordinance correctly, but parking lot is a structure.
So go to the definition and look up structure.
Yeah, any temporary or permanently constructed, erected or placed material or combination of materials in or upon the ground. Including but not limited to buildings, manufactured homes, radio towers, sheds and storage bins, storage tanks, portable carports, swimming pools, tennis courts. Parking lots and signs. Fences, culverts, driveways, roads, mailboxes, bobhouses, not exceeding sixty four square feet. Uh, stone walls, walks, landscaping, subsurface waste disposal facilities and essential services are structures, but are exempt. Parking lots aren't in that second sentence.
So we've always, the, the parking is a driveway, basically, is what we've always sort of ruled in that case. So that last sentence sort of carves out the exemption.
Not sure I read it that way.
I, I, I tend to agree with, with Nate. Um, but I, I would say that since there's one more parking space than required. That space could be eliminated in the event that it was in fact within the setback.
Or could they just move all four of them down just a little bit more to give more of a buffer on the P one? Stick P one on the other side of, uh, before the, seems to be a little bit of a greater space.
I don't think we want to be, I don't think we want to be suggesting means and methods here, it's, it's really just. Don't approach on the.
And I, it, it, yeah, it's don't encroach on the setback, but we're also relying on GIS boundaries that could be substantial.
Yeah, I mean, our.
Divergent from reality to make that assumption.
And I, I, I think our, um, site plan regs skate that the site plan itself needs to be drawn by. An engineer or surveyor signed and sealed.
Which they have requested a waiver.
And we have not yet.
Yeah, exactly. I'm simply raising that as, you know, uh, a.
Yeah.
Point of discussion about, about. That waiver in this scenario where you're right up on that setback with something that probably is a structure in the zoning ordinance.
That was the, um, property pins. Located, do you know where they are?
Yeah, they, they can be located, um. I believe the south one, actually the southwest corner is a granite monument. Um, the other ones I think are iron rods or pins. I can go, I, I've read a lot of deeds lately, but I could go back and reread what this one is. Um. Anyway, yeah.
So we may be, we may be saying that. As long as you can ensure that you don't approach on.
You need to put the pins on, on the plot.
Well, however they do that, but I mean, as long as they don't approach on the setbacks with the parking area. We're okay. Now, if suppose they did. Happen to end up building the parking lot in the set, in the setback area. After we gave them. A waiver for the site plan work. And it ended up that the parking lot was actually in the.
Setback.
In the setback, um, that would be an issue, I suppose, for the butter. Uh, who would?
Well, I could get a variance from zoning.
Well, the butter, the butter would complain and. But your butter might not complain because your butter might not know or care or care.
That is the very purpose of having that requirement in the site plan in the first place.
Yeah.
That you don't run into that issue. You don't create an encroachment that's going to agree with the butter. And you don't place work on the ZVA to try to rubber stamp something after the fact that's an encroachment.
Yeah. Agree. The all, all part of the discussion about the waiver.
Yes.
So let's, let's talk about the waiver. Um. When you say you relied on GIS. Are you referring to the town tax map?
Yeah, so town, so a couple of different things, like I say, a couple of different overlays to do this, so GIS. Aerial, aerial imagery, like you can stack images on top of each other to derive more detail, slightly more detail. Um, topo was, topography was town. Uh. Uh, and then soil maps is USGS, uh, soil maps to get that boundary. And that, that also has, that has more topography on it too, to kind of verify where you're placing everything. So those are the, there's like three sources.
To what degree of certainty are the three sources that you said?
So what I do is, um. Pull each of the images into my program, scale them, like explode them because they're back, you can get them vectors.
Yeah.
Not the Google map one, that's not a vector, that's a raster image. But the other data is vector images, then you, there's a bar scale that comes with those, even with your maps, there's a bar scale. And then you use that explosion to scale it into the program and then start the work, basically. So there's the bar scale and then we use a building edge as well to scale and check.
You're working with a monitor that might be what, twenty eight, thirty inches?
It's like, it's this. Yeah, which works just fine. There's, you can only zoom in so far with the, with the maps.
Yeah.
So it doesn't really matter how big the monitor is, especially if you. The way that I do it with explosion of the vector file allows you to have. And like points, like next points to scale stuff, so. Even if I could zoom in infinitely, you can't, like the size of the monitor doesn't have any bearing, like the accuracy is what I'm trying to tell you. Um. Probably better for my eyes, but.
And if you're trying to, if you're trying to make the bar scales equal.
Yeah, so those are vectors, those come in as vectors, so you can, you're, they only have a one, an A point and a B point. And then you match them.
I, I get that and I have actually done that and I. I don't know what the degree of accuracy is, but I, I would suggest that. If you think you're getting within inches by your method. I would suggest that you may not be as accurate as you think you're getting.
Okay.
Personal opinion from having done that a few times, or maybe more than a few. Um, and I, I definitely do not have faith in the. GIS tax backs, so. I'm, I'm of the opinion that if you could find, well, you have the monument. If you could find the, I guess it would be northwest end.
Yeah, so as a part of that, if, if. If you need me to do, uh, arcs off of two pins and locate the existing facade of the. So everything is related to the, the existing building. So if I gave you arc points to intersect with the front two corners on the street of the existing house. I'm happy to do that and provide an addendum to this site plan so that you can see the distances accurately to this. So does everybody know what that means, how that is done?
I think you'd need, you need to.
You may need to.
I think the two pins you need are the ones that David was just talking about.
Yeah, I'm happy, yeah, that.
Here and there.
Yeah, well, and you have one of them.
Because what you may be able to do is take P one and put it over there.
Yeah, that'll work.
If that becomes an issue.
That'll work fine, but the arcs that I'm gonna, that I'd use is. Let me just point and just show you how this, how it can work. So you take this pin.
Right.
You do a circle to here.
Yeah.
Then you take this pin and you do a circle all the way back to here. Then you do one circle to here and then one circle back to there. And then you've now made a, uh, two circles.
Right.
That cross each other and that creates. That cross each other and that creates the two points here. And then from there on, it's just a matter of measurements and just filling in the blanks.
Right, but what?
So I'm ha- I'm happy to do that and then that'll lay out.
Just those, if you could find those two pins.
I could even provide, so what I could do to make sure that this is the right distances. I can arc the setbacks too and create that as well to locate the pins. So this one and this one, is that, that's what you guys are asking for?
No, we're asking for the, the ones up at.
The one up at the top.
They want, the only lines we care about is this one.
Okay.
So it's this pin and that pin or monument, whichever.
Sure.
That's gonna tell you where you set back.
Is it your contention that a parking spot is a structure? Sounds like it is yours.
It is mine, yep.
It's not mine and it hasn't been mine since I've been here and I can tell you that it hasn't been.
I, I haven't done it before as that way because, because I've had to, I've had to park people in the setback for. Well, I mean, it's a constant issue at lakefront properties.
If it was, then Keller never could have built that building, never could have built that building because all of his parking spaces.
Yeah.
Are, would be within the setback.
Yeah, there, there are two sentences in the definition of the structure. Parking lot is in the first sentence.
But is this a lot?
The exempted stru- the exempted items are in the second sentence.
Yeah.
And, I mean, I'm hap- anyway, back to the big, back, back to the real point is like, I'm happy to provide an addendum if it means that that's a condition of approval.
Yes.
Totally happy to do it.
Parking this way and totally change it around.
Well, you could have just find the two lines and you get a pretty steep slope there. I mean, it's not easy to do. I think you probably.
I just don't wanna move it farther down. I'd rather move it closer to the street. I don't wanna move it farther downhill because my drainage issues are gonna start compacting enormously.
So that's a question I have, um, you've got a drainage wells shown there.
There's two, yeah.
Yeah, um, and then a retention area.
Yes.
That's just your best guess at how that might look. It, there's no engineer involved with this.
I mean, no, there's not an engineer involved with this, uh, concept for the drainage.
And I, I don't know how far we can go with this, but, um, you, you've got a a fairly large, you know, relatively large piece of impermeable surfaces. Is that gonna be paid?
No, I think the idea here is some sort of gravel drive.
Yeah, and I, I think gravel drives actually now are considered to be impermeable surfaces. They're not.
Yeah, that's correct. It's not, it's not, uh, yeah, every time I've done gravel drive, it's, it's considered a impermeable surface.
Yeah, so, um, an engineer would make the calculations as to how big that sedimentation structure should be.
Sure.
Using, you know, best practices and whatever. So, I'm, I'm, I'm a little concerned with that because of all the emphasis lately. On the water quality, we've got the stream down below the property which runs right directly into the lake and so forth and um, I wonder what an engineer would come up with for taking care of that drainage. At the same time, I wonder, does our, our zoning ordinance even require that? So we're in a site plan review, major site plan.
We're in major site plan.
So I, I think it probably does.
It, it definitely does.
I mean, it, you, you may be over generous with what you've shown here, maybe not. I, I just got no way to gauge that or judge it.
Wanna pull up the site plan, see what the site plan regs?
What?
We can pull up the site plan regs.
Yeah.
You guys are so inclined.
Well, I mean, I think that's, it, it probably just talks about how we gotta be satisfied the drainage is adequate, taken care of and it's not gonna be scripted. Um, so I wo- I wonder if, um, if there'd be an opportunity or an opportunity of having an engineer weigh in on what, what's here, not a full blown site plan. But just to get something like that. Some advice.
So we start to, I mean, starting to get into practicalities and sort of the overall cost and one of our. So we would really like to have the multifamily, but that's really the issue that we're here about. Um, and that's actually the only piece, like we could construct it as a duplex with a building permit.
Mm-hmm, right.
So it's really the, 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 the four unit aspect, so we'd have to evaluate the cost benefit.
So the four unit aspect pops it into a major site plan.
Well, once you.
Three, three or more.
Once you have the third unit, you're a major site plan.
Right, I see.
That, that's, that's the, the thing, so we would have to do a cost benefit.
Maybe use.
Well, I, I think.
Twelve hundred.
Well, no, I think that's, no, I, I think that's, I guess that we'd have to get into, we'd have to do a cost analysis of what the best path forward for us is.
Yeah.
And I, so I don't wanna make a statement because I don't know what that would cost.
I'm not entirely sure either, so that's why I turned to Aaron, just asking.
Of which the best path forward for us is at that point.
Right.
Under drainage.
Yeah, site specifics, I understand.
What, what I'm showing Tim here, um, is five point six.
One point three.
Four. Which says projects. No. Which says projects under major review shall be designed to state of New Hampshire site specific standards.
Well.
It's not helpful.
I mean, I, it's not, it is not helpful.
It's not helpful.
But I would be, I would be okay if you guys got some some engineering assistance on that particular drainage structure and, and, and trying to handle that, that, that runoff. Um, and then if the corner pin issue that Nate raised was able to be resolved by, as you say, finding the pins and doing some field measurements, that sort of thing to confirm. It would seem that we would, we would be addressing the issues that are important.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I would buy into that. Nate, how about you?
Yeah, I, you know. I think so. I, I mean, again, I think this, I think the site plan is a good concept. It's laid out well. I think it's, it's a very nice multifamily conversion. My only, you know, my only, you know, issue with it is, is having a reasonable level of assurance that what's being proposed here won't ultimately encroach on the setback. I just don't trust the G I, but the GIS boundaries could be plus or minus three feet. Generally, it's sub meter accuracy. They're developed off our photos. Um, you know, so plus or minus three feet puts
That's a lot.
In question.
Yeah.
And, you know, I, I recognize, you know, that there's a cost of, of, you know, employing a land surveyor to, to actually certify what the boundaries are. Uh, but anything that could get us to a point where we would be reasonably, uh, confident that there would not be an encroachment, uh, of the parking lot, which I do read as a structure in the way that it is defined in the zoning ordinance. Uh, wouldn't be resulting in an encroachment. That's, you know, I'm just trying to make sure that
Yeah.
we're covered there and that we're not ultimately gonna create an issue that agrees the butters or agrees the ZVA later.
And we don't want, we, we don't want you guys to be in a position to having the butter object and take you to court over you know, two feet and, and roachment and, because they're gonna read the zoning ordinance regardless of what Rob has interpreted, just like you did. Yeah. Definitely wanna avoid that and I think there's every reason why the, the property owner would wanna, wanna do that too.
Is there a driveway there now?
Yeah.
Where this parking area will be like.
No, it's, it's open, it's open lawn space. The chicken coop been part of it.
Right. There's already a structure there.
Not like, it's like, sort of like it's fencing.
There's no structure where people are discussing.
Glued to the side of the barn.
But the area of, of, of discussion is, is wide open, right? So.
What's, uh, your timeframe on?
Uh, so our, our motivation is, um, my mother-in-law, we need an in-law apartment for her. That's why we wanna have first floor living in the back, um, and so our timeframe is basically, she would like us to have done it two years ago. So.
Skill bringing you to see your house.
That, that's, that's our primary motivation. Our secondary one is that the barn's collapsing, the foundation is not itself.
Yeah.
But that's secondary to the primary is to get her a really good apartment in there.
Yeah. Well, I mean, as I read this sentence again, it, it says, designed to a certain standard. It doesn't say an engineer has to.
No.
Design it. So.
But what are New Hampshire's site specific standards?
Well, we don't know and.
We don't. And Nate, do you have any thoughts on what site specific standards are?
All right, not my area of expertise. I'd have to do some homework on the.
I would say based on what you see elsewhere in, in recent development, it's the retention pond is what they like. So you're not, yeah, the water collects, it gets an opportunity to do this before it goes away.
Yeah, and they have to calculate the overflow elevations and there's usually a mixture of permeable material in the bottom and then some plants that are required. It, it's pretty much a standard detail.
Yeah.
Uh, it's just a matter of, okay, how big should that thing be and how deep and so forth.
Well, and, and I mean, as, as the homeowner, it becomes that what we want in our yard versus constructing a highly similar building that doesn't need a site review. Uh, cause right now that's a really nice garden space and if you swale it, you get good water and you actually help yourself. Uh, if you do it in the right way.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, uh, so we're sort of, I, well, I'd rather have it sink into the soil. I mean, it's very wet back there as it is. I mean, that's, that's our goal, is to have it.
Yeah.
Uh, so to feed, feed the soil.
Soil line is pretty accurate to where it starts getting wet in that yard, like really accurate.
Yeah.
The types change drastically at that line.
Where are we?
If there were only three parking spaces, no one would have a problem.
Well, with, with the corner pin issue, no, but we we still got the drainage issue.
I mean, just because I don't have issue with four parking spaces.
If, if that'll solve it though, we're happy to go to three. I mean, we're fully gonna limit people to a single car. Regardless of how many parking spaces we have. It was more having an extra one is often convenient.
I mean, I would I guess I would still like to see that northwest end located. And then you could just draw a line between the granite monument and the pin. And we'd be happy, the neighbors would be happy, everybody would be happy. And at that point, then you can make a decision whether you take P one and eliminate it or move it or whatever, because it's an extra.
Yeah, right. Yeah, no, I think that's fair. Okay.
So my, my, what would make me happy is if Chris or somebody under your direction would go out and find that northwest pin and then you could, um, draw that line in, in the sand or the soil or put a string, whatever.
Just straight, yeah.
And that way, everybody would know where that property line is and then you've got your setback. And I, I would.
And we're not saying we need a surveyor to do it.
I'm not saying that.
Right. So I could, so I would accept that as a condition of the waiver.
Yeah. Um, and as, as far as the drainage goes, um, you know, I think you, at this point, are very familiar with your property. And Chris has indicated that it's, it's pretty wet out back.
It is, there's a spring basically.
Um, you know, I sympathize.
It's close, it's not quite a spring, but it's close.
Okay, I bet if you dug a little bit, it would be a spring.
It would be. Well.
And you know, I, I think it's, it, it strikes me that Chris has looked at that, taken it into account. And, you know, do we really need to burden the developer there with a, a quote engineered solution or can we do it the way that, you know, we know it's wet, we know which way water flows and Chris has, you know, done some, done some work to put in a swale, make sure the the water goes where it needs to go.
There's also, I added a retaining wall on the west too as well to redirect some runoff that currently just sheet, it probably just sheet flows practically, it pours rain.
Mm-hmm.
So on the northwest corner, there's a new retaining wall too, right beside the trash. And that's also going to, that'll raise that whole grade up higher and redirect to the swale. Which is down the north boundary. So there's some additional work too. I said, sorry, I forgot to say that, but there's a wall there now.
I mean, you know, that kinda sounds to me like you looked at a problem and come up with a reasonable solution. Everybody.
Um, well, we might be able to waive the requirement for an engineered site plan. We, I don't think we can waive that requirement that that has to be built to states, states.
But we don't, we don't know what those standards are.
Right, uh, so what I'm saying is, how do you, how do you square that with the statement there that they have to be built to those standards? Okay, can we waive that?
We're not waiving it. We're saying they have to meet state standards.
I mean, you can't waive state law.
No.
We're not waiving it. We're saying it had, that the swale has to meet state standards.
Well, I don't.
Just like a road has to meet town standards.
Could you put that phrase back up there, that statement back up?
You just want that one?
All right, so, uh, what we don't know is does the state require this particular project to have a engineered site plan designed to site specific standards? What we're saying here is the town says projects under major review shall be designed to the state of New Hampshire site specific standards, two different things.
Right.
So, my question is, can we waive that clause, that five point six point four? Or can we say you don't have to have an engineered site plan? But this drainage structure down here has to be built so standard. And then how would they pull that off? Well, you'd almost have to get an engineer to get, to get some, uh, guidance at least.
Right.
Right.
Or I would think you could go to somebody at DES and say there's this section in the Enfield zoning regs that talks about site specific standards on the state level, and can you please hand me the manual on that?
Yeah, there's a DES, newhampshire.gov, uh, new-
Yeah, there's a DES, newhampshire.gov, uh New Hampshire Homeowners Guide to Stormwater Management. Do it yourself, stormwater solutions for your home. I think it actually has a picture of Lakeside Park in it. At least it looks an awful lot like it. Somebody else has a very similar marina if it's not. But so there is a document that DES has published for residential.
These site specific standards are a whole nother.
Category. Would we be willing to accept the. Document that Eric just referred to?
We'd have to read it before we, I mean, I've, you know, it's a, it's like a lot of things. I I pull, I'm just trying to find. If there's simple stuff revering to.
Hey, keep in mind. If um. Let's say a developer was gonna build a ten unit building across the street. And there's a, a piece of large lot over there. We wouldn't be waving this sort of thing.
Correct. I mean, we're, you know, we're dealing with a homeowner, basically. And.
Well, I'm I'm just.
I I I think we, I think we need to find out what these standards are.
Well, David, they're they're engineering standards for for site work for for stormwater management and drainage. Not something that it. There's no like, uh, there's a lot of standard designs, but. You've got to run a lot of calculations about the size of the parking lot. How much water sheets off, a hundred year flood point, you know, all that. And they take all that into consideration and they come up with a stormwater design. You know, that's the the right way to do it. In this case, we wanna wanna back off. I think we're inclined to back off from that. But to what point? I don't, what do you think?
I I, you know. I would generally think if if there is a written DES, and it sounds like there is, I'm sure there is. Best practices for stormwater management guide for, you know, residential properties. This is a, you know. Essentially, you know, what's in the duplex today?
Yeah, right.
I don't, I wouldn't personally have an issue with. A commitment to follow those best practices um that DES lays out in a in a guide like that if. The applicant was willing to do that and and consider that to be. Appropriate under this particular item, but.
You may find the site contractor would have pretty intimate knowledge of. What what typically gets built for this sort of thing.
Sorry, slides.
And I was thinking, on your your comment about the the number of units, I mean, part of why we chose four is because that's still primary residence. Um, you know, by zoning, we can have six. But we specifically are stopping at four so that it's primary residence for mortgage reasons and. Because I think that's what fits the lot best.
What do you mean by primary residence?
Uh so if you go to try to get a primary mortgage, and if if you want to be anything above. Four units, if you had five units or more, you're a commercial property.
Okay.
So you're, so there's a, there's a distinction when you split from four to five between primary residence and commercial property.
Yeah.
Uh.
Yeah.
So if you add a fifth unit, you're a commercial property no matter what. No, whether you're living there or not. Uh from a mortgage standpoint, these aren't legal definitions.
Okay.
Um but they're sort of industry standards.
Yeah. And I'm and I'm also. Progress in the fact, we're gonna review all of these requirements in our zoning rewrite and. This may not be where we wanna end up with projects like this. So that's why I'm willing to. You know, not go to the letter of the law here on on these requirements.
Bill, you've been pretty quiet and so is Whitney. What way in?
I still understand the. I'm just a little bit with the interpretation and the, I know how it's written and the parking space being a structure. And that I don't necessarily agree with a hundred percent. I don't think we've ever. Discussed that being that way since I've been an alternate on this. But be it as it may, that's what it is. I think as far as the. You know, like I said, you gotta wait for the, find the two markers, measure that out. That's more than acceptable for that. Yeah, I just.
Can we pull it up?
Find out what the uh. That, you know, find out what the measurements are for the parking swell, find out what the specifications are for that and. You know, that'll answer some other questions, but.
Can we pull up that definition? If if people disagree, we can talk through it.
I don't think we're, I don't think we need to argue that.
Well, I mean, there's disagreement.
Because if they come with the two two points and they're, if they if they're willing to find the two points to keep within the setback. Then it's not an issue either way.
Right, right, yeah.
They're saying, okay, we agree with that interpretation.
Yeah, so for us, it's close enough. That I can make the building work, make the parking scheme work with.
Right.
Very little change to the overall direction of the project. So. Uh for the, yeah, I think it's fine.
I think we need to have the discussion and make the argument, just not right now.
Not as part of the site plan. Yeah, cause it, so if it was gonna like break it for us.
Right.
Then totally different situation and, but you know. We did would do something. I don't know what we'd do. I need to rehash with Eric and we'd press on, but. Um, yeah, for us, for right now, I'm totally happy to agree too.
Two foot thinner bar.
Yeah, I don't know.
We'd figure something out.
There are two more feet off his house or something.
Or or move the parking space.
There's a couple eliminated.
We would do something simple. Yeah, no, it's committing to stay out.
There's there's lots of options. There's lots, there's options.
Could be two horizontal and one vertical.
Yeah, so we're happy to.
And I would just say, like.
Verify.
I'm hopeful that what Chris has drawn is bigger than what the parking area, not the actual parking spaces, but like in terms of drivable space. I'm hoping we don't have to use that much space, but I asked him to draw the biggest space that might be needed.
Right.
Cause I don't think we, I think we can.
Right.
Be more efficient with our attorney.
Right, yeah.
So how about this? What what if we um we waive the site plan? The engineered site plan requirement, but stipulate that the requirements of five point six or whatever that was. Uh need to be followed. Period. And you gotta do the best you can to follow.
The five point six is the.
Standards.
We're we're not gonna.
Cause they've got to anyways.
Yeah, no, I mean, I I don't think, I, I mean, you'd like like the fifty foot setback from the from the.
From the stream.
Like, we can't. But we're way away from that, which I'm glad, and I mean.
Yeah.
But like, that's not something that you guys can waive it. Well, I guess you guys can't waive that anyway. So like, that's the kind of standard, I don't think, is I think it's outside, state law is outside your purview.
Right.
Yep, so what in effect would happen is.
Yeah.
However, you guys.
Right.
Built this structure down here, if someone objected and you could. Make a point where you didn't build it to that standard, then okay, then then maybe that's an issue for you guys.
Right.
But I think as as a board, we could say it just has to be built to that standard.
I'm in favor of that.
Yeah, yeah. So we're not waiving anything.
Well, yes, we're waving the the requirement for a engineered site point.
Or one developed by a engineer or surveyor.
What what is the actual waiver?
The only waiver is survey.
Right, so the the, as I read through the site plan regs.
Right.
You have to, they they require the drawings be prepared by either a licensed engineer or surveyor.
Right.
And those are the only two options.
So an engineer or say a surveyor would prepare the.
So the.
The boundary survey.
Meets and bounds.
Right.
The engineer, if required because of the project.
Right.
Would have been all this.
Right.
Drainage design. So that's what we're waiting.
Right. But you're basically allowing us to use Chris's drawings. That's what we're really requesting. Is to use the drawings that he prepares to whatever standards people need.
Yes.
Right, I mean, that's.
But whatever you build there for that drainage structure has to be built to those standards.
Right. Yeah, we're not asking for variance from standards.
We got it figured out, Dave.
Question.
Sharon, you have a question?
First, I have a comment, then a quick question. So I am in favor of this. But listening to your conversation, I'm confused and I just want some clarification. About how you're making a decision, including. I heard Eric say, well, this is what we can do. And that sounded that I don't have to reiterate what he said. That made sense to me. Then I thought Tim said, well, we could waive this. And I didn't hear Eric asking for that. It sounded like he had a solution. Without that, and then I also heard, well, if the neighbor has a problem. Then they can take you to court or, you know, they can argue this. Why? I don't want somebody making a decision about some property next to mine. No offense, Eric. I don't want somebody making a decision about a property next to mine. It is not in regulations. And putting it on me that later, if I find out about it, I have to go to court. I have to spend my money when the committee could have done something properly that they didn't. And you have to think about if this was anyone else, someone you didn't know. Or a developer, would you be making the same decision? You have to have some you um. Unanimity, is that how you pronounce the word, with how these decisions are made? And please don't put it on the taxpayer.
Well, Sharon, if I understand your comment. And correct me if I'm not understanding you correctly. Uh you are concerned about intrusion into that setback area. Am I understanding that correctly?
That's what I think this discussion is about.
That that is what it's about.
Yeah.
And if I am understanding the consensus of the board. We are asking Eric or Chris or somebody under their su- under their supervision. To find the property pin at the northwest corner. And then to draw a line from that pin, which they need to find. To the granite marker monument, whatever you wanna call it. At the other corner. Which would then give you to a very good degree of accuracy. Where the property line is, and then from that, you measure back fifteen feet to get your setback. So. We, we have a solution. Which is finding that pin. Which will then. Make with a whole lot more certainty than we're at now. That will define where the property line is and we can then, or Chris can then measure back. See where the fifteen foot setback is. See where those parking spaces, in particular the P one, fall. And then Eric, as the landowner, can make a decision whether he keeps. P one, which is an extra space. Or he eliminates it or comes up with some other solution. So, you know, yes, everything that you said. In your comment is true. We did discuss a lot of things. And. That's how we come to a consensus. We we talk about things, we throw ideas out. We keep some of them, we reject other. So the solution that the board has come up with is find the pin. Which a surveyor has planted at some point in the distant past. Connect the pin and the granite monument. That gives you the line that's of concern to you and to us. And then we determine the setback. Does that make sense?
That makes, I mean, I understand all of that. What I don't understand is it seemed like that's where you were heading. And then it seemed like it switched to a conversation about, well, we're gonna waive such and such.
Well, no.
No, no, no.
No, 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 no.
About that said, property, neighboring property owner can dispute it if they want to in the future.
The applicant requested a waiver of the requirement in how I didn't believe.
Yeah, right.
I think what you said was we were trying to avoid having that happen later on, having the neighbor come back. We're trying to avoid having that happen over this discussion.
Rob, could you?
That happened.
It seemed like, I'm sorry if I misunderstood. It seemed like I'm all in favor of everything you just explained. That's not an issue. It just seemed like the conversation shifted.
Um, you know, the 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 conversation had two different prongs to it. And perhaps we weren't clear when we shifted from having a solution on the. Property line setback to the other part of the conversation, which is. Uh Eric's request to waive the requirement. That an engineer or surveyor prepare these drawings.
Did you go to page twenty six, article ten? Yep, yeah. So um. I wanted to find that because I was curious what authority we do we have even to waive these standards. And so they're that. Pretty clear.
Yep.
So the spirit intent of the regulations, certainly. The only issue we had was the 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 survey was the corner pin and the layout of the lot. So we've come up with it, I think.
I think we solved that, right?
Yeah. And on the other part, we're we're not actually waiving the standard. We're waiving the requirement for an engineer drawing, showing how they're gonna build that.
Swell.
Uh swell and.
Yeah.
How they're gonna handle the stuff essentially.
So can I just make one one clarification here? The waiver of the survey requirement. The solution that has been discussed, I think helps in terms of due diligence and and maybe makes us more confident in in. But I wanna be careful that. This gentleman is an architect can go and find pins. He is not a surveyor. He cannot certify a property boundary. He's legally not allowed to do that. He can provide us his own field measurements as an architect from a pin he finds on the site. He can't verify that that pin is a real pin or that it represents the property boundary. We have to take that information as it is. That this gentleman can do field measurements of those things, but he cannot certify that that is an actual true property boundary. Only a land surveyor is qualified. We all have to under, have that common understanding of of that caveat, but. His field measurements could help in terms of due diligence to to help us, you know, try to ensure that there would not be an encroachment on. On the, but we have to take those as they are, the field measurements of an architect, not the certified boundary of a licensed land.
Which is why we have to give a waiver of that.
Right. In which we have agreed that, I think we've agreed that that's something that we would be amenable to.
I just wanna make sure everybody's on your stance, that, you know, that's that distinction.
Sharon, anything else?
I understand how you're making your decision. I think it's a precedent.
You think what?
I think it's a precedent as we look at more buildings coming into our community. I think I think that people who are individual landowners would prefer that you don't give a waiver and that you you have someone who's who's the most qualified to determine where those boundaries are, to protect their own properties.
And we may have a butter.
Yep.
We have what?
We may have in a butter.
Oh.
I don't know if you're taking a butter's comments yet and you've taken Sharon, so.
Yeah, well, Sharon's in a butter. She's within the two hundred feet.
Okay.
I'm not objecting at all to Eric's building.
I'm just saying like, yes, they should take the butter stuff because people don't know we're neighbors.
I gather that.
At any rate.
I just want to make sure that you.
So anybody on virtually have any questions or comments? Linda? Okay.
I think Nate brought up some really good issues that we should work on. Not I I kind of agree with Sharon. We I feel like part of this is that we know Eric. And we know he is reasonable in his decisions and we respect him. And and what if this is developer from New York that we don't know anything about? And would we do the same thing? And I think I I think we should, at least going forward, take this as a little lesson to not not set precedence unless they're the direction we want to go. I I feel like we should go ahead and and I'd vote for something like what you've suggested and let them find the pins and draw a line and and that's fine. But going forward, I I think we need to be a little more careful and maybe part of that is clarifying some of our regulations. So we have one thing, one thing that says a parking lot is a structure, another that doesn't indicate that it is. So we need to, we need to define that better. So so I'm for it. I just think we have some homework to do.
Well, we know that our zoning regs need more than a little bit of work. To your point, I don't think that there is a contradiction as to whether a parking lot is a structure or not. Nate pointed out the paragraph or the two sentences. And when I, my very first interaction with this planning board, not this one, but the N Field Planning Board was when I was on the dog park committee and had to cite a parking lot. And way back when, probably twenty twenty ten, twenty eleven, I don't remember. I don't I don't even remember who the land use administrator was at that point. But it was very clear that we had to observe the front setback. And I can remember going out and measuring from the center line of Route four A in order to locate where that parking lot was going to be.
I think if it if this was a single family home, well, as as it is now, and and the driveway was in the setback. And this wouldn't be an issue.
It wouldn't.
You're you're not really dealing with a site plan review anyway.
I mean, there's a there's a driveway and there's a parking lot or parking area.
The driveway is in the second sentence of the structure definition, which is the exempt stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah. The parking lot is in the first sentence, which is the not exempt status.
You know, it it was clear to me with the dog park and.
So now what we need to do is is we go forward thinking about the zoning requirements, is that a provision that we want to keep? That's not a question for tonight.
Right. But we'll we'll talk about that probably on Saturday at our forum. And we'll have other discussions on it.
But I am sensitive to the the argument about setting precedent and I am concerned about that.
With that, we're small town. I think someone coming in from New York building something that's, let's say, are questionable, you may look harder at things. We got someone local trying to do something. And they uh
You better not.
See them trying to hide anything.
You better not.
I'll I'll have to say I disagree with that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, I don't. Yes, but I mean, they're not trying to hide anything. They put this out there. They showed it to us. I don't feel that they're trying to hide anything that I think getting the, we're finding answers to the solutions. It's not like, so they're trying to hide something. It's plain, it's out front. It's being discussed. We're trying to find a solution to an issue.
It's also.
I'm going to make a motion. The motion I'm going to make is to waive the necessity of a land survey with the condition that they find the two posts in order to keep the parking spaces outside of the setback.
Do I hear a second?
Well, hang on.
Well, I want to second. I don't want a discussion.
A motion has been made. A motion has been made. We need a second. If we have a second, then we can have discussion.
All right.
Well, seconded.
Linda?
Yes.
You are not able to second this because you were not here when we started the hearing and you've been, I don't want to use the word replaced, but an alternate has been pointed. Okay?
But we're not above the seven.
But, okay, we have, I heard a second from Tim. All in favor of Dan's?
Discussion.
Of Dan? Discussion, I'm sorry. Thank you.
I would like to encourage Dan to amend his his motion to add that the the standards for stormwater management, as outlined in five points, whatever that number is, need to be followed.
I'll accept that.
Okay.
I was going to make that a condition of approval. Like, go for it.
There's further discussion on that? They they didn't ask for a waiver from.
They didn't.
So we don't need to.
So we can't we can't give them something they didn't know?
I don't think that's a necessary addition.
They have to follow it.
They already have to follow it. They're not waiting for them following.
They're required to follow it and they didn't ask for a waiver.
I'm just, they're asking for a waiver to not have to have the meets amount to survey by approval.
Or engineer.
Or engineer.
Um, is there any more discussion?
We will, with process wise, if this waiver is granted, is there, what is the next step? Is there a revised version of the site plan with those measurements detailed on it? Is there a memo detailing those measurements? What is, what what is the board provided in terms of due diligence?
They're going to have to give us a new piece of paper that's got where the line actually is and where they're putting the spaces.
And we can either do that as a condition or we can recess the hearing to a time certain, which would allow them to find that pin and prepare a new drawing. And that's something that the board could decide.
I think we should make it a condition.
Right. I don't see any advantage in having another hearing.
No, I don't. I don't either, but I, you know, I have to put the options on the table.
This is just the waiver. This isn't the approval.
This is just the waiver.
Okay.
Right.
This is not the approval.
So the 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 motion on the table is to grant the applicant the waiver from, I don't remember the section, but it's the section that allows that that requires an engineer or a surveyor to do the site plan on a major site plan review. If you're in favor of that motion, raise your hand. If you're opposed, I see nobody opposed. The waiver is granted. Okay, we've done that. Now, moving on to the site plan approval as a whole. Does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion if we approve the major site plan on eyes on P twenty five oh four dash one, Eric Russell and Hannah Massicore. With the condition that the property owner come in with a new site plan showing the proper north point, northwest and south west, northwest and northeast? Yeah, would be the northwest and northeast.
And northeast.
Northeast points in order to keep it, in order to then keep with out outside of the fifteen foot setback for the parking spaces.
Can I offer a friendly?
Go for it.
That the one that added to the condition be that that northwest pin be located. And I don't think that was part of your.
Okay, be located.
And.
Was it really that that we're we're asking the property owner to to confirm that the parking lot will not encroach on the setback?
Sure.
And so.
But he's got to find the pins in order to do that.
We 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 are telling them how we want it.
Requirement is for that.
The minimum requires.
Just one, you said bring in a new drawing. Does that mean submit a new drawing to Rob or have another?
No, to to Rob.
To Rob.
To Rob, not the condition is that there's a new drawing that's showing.
No, I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, and and if if the new drawing doesn't meet the setback requirement, then the decision will not be issued.
Right. Um, would we be allowed to? If it turns out that we have a problem with the setback, could we change the parking on the new drawing?
Oh, absolutely.
Without, would we then need to come back for a new hearing? I don't think so. Okay.
No, we're just making a condition that the parking lot not be within.
Correct. I'm just trying to make sure I understand the process for satisfying that with the drawing itself.
Yep.
Yep. Because, you know, it's always possible we'll have to move some stuff around.
Yeah, I mean, if if you have to move stuff around because the setback line is not where you think it is today, then we trust you to.
But we'll have to verify it and submit it. I just want to make sure it's not another.
Yep.
Yeah. Because if there's going to be another hearing, I would ask for a continuance so that we don't have to re-notify.
No, no.
No, I mean, you know, what we're looking at is a but potentially minor modification. And I think our regulations actually state that we can do minor modifications to an existing site plan without going through the public hearing process. And if the modification that we're doing makes the site plan more conforming to the regs, then I don't see where it does any any harm and it does a whole lot of good.
Do I get a second?
I seconded.
Okay, with these seconds.
Any discussion?
Discussion, Nate?
I find myself leaning towards the other direction in terms of of transparency for the board and and the public to know how things get resolved. I would tend to lean towards wanting to continue it and see what the resolution of this is and if there are any changes to the plan that we should be aware of as a board, be able to, you know, make sure that those are vetted publicly for the public. Uh, so I I don't know that I'm prepared to consider this to be a, you know, a a condition of approval you all made. That's totally fine. But, you know, I I would personally lean towards continuing it and 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 getting that that resolution, um, you know, documented before I'm prepared to.
Okay, would you want a continuance? As long as it keeps within the days.
I mean, my favorite would be whatever's simplest, right, which is to submit a drawing to Rob that hopefully that just is the same drawing with confirmation uh, dimensions where the pins are. But I think it's worth thinking through, like, if there is a is a change, because we're like realistically, what's going to change? The parking spaces will move. Yeah. Right, that's the, that either they'll stay where they are or they'll move. Those are sort of the two options.
I I'm going to ask our butter, Sharon Bofay, to weigh in since she's the one that is most likely to be affected by any change. So what we're talking about, Sharon, is. What?
But she's still in a butter. Cause she's two hundred. There's two, is there two butters? Does he?
Is it Tori or Troy?
Tori.
Linda and Tori.
All right. Well, when I asked for any comments from people on on the Teams platform, I did not get any response. So I'm assuming that she had no response then.
She has no response. She just did thumbs up.
Okay, no response. So Sharon, the the question for you. Okay, and do you have an opinion?
You're ver- you're very good at repeating things and making them clear, and I do appreciate that. But in in case of time, I I understand the question. I agree with Nate. I'm a stickler for process. Nothing personal to Eric at all. Um, I think especially what I'm interested in is going forward, there's going to be many requirements for development and N Field.
Yep.
I want the process to be clean and above board. So the people who come in and say, hey, what happened about this? Where did it go? And it's in the records. It's in the meeting minutes. It's rubber stamped one hundred percent.
I'll take back my motion. And make a mo- and instead have a motion that we have a continuance of this hearing.
Well, you can't take back your motion.
Okay, if somebody takes back a second, I can. Or you could, we can vote it out either way.
Well, I I'm not sure I agree with Nate because I think that that if this was a complicated site plan issue that we had a an accurate site plan drawing done by an engineer and so forth, then I I would we wouldn't have this issue. But I I think this is so easily resolved. And we've told the the applicant that they they cannot encroach upon that setback with the parking lot. We just, so that is the rule. You cannot do that. They know that. Um, and if if they find the pin, it's not where they thought and that it is going to encroach, they're going to do something different with the driveway. And it's not going to matter one bit if the cars are oriented north, south, or east, west, or whatever they come up with. Because we've basically waived the requirement for going. So I think just having a condition i- is is the way. So I think, uh, just having a condition i- is, is the way to go and get this thing off the table.
Well, I, I wanna point out that we have not waived the requirement for a drawing, we have waived the requirement for a drawing prepared by a engineer or surveyor. And, you know, it, it's perfectly reasonable to grant that waiver, which be- because we're getting a pretty good drawing here. The only thing that's uncertain is where that property line is. And I think my opinion is out of deference to the abutter who is most affected, we ought to have the hearing continued. And that way, everybody is happy. Dan?
David, are you taking comments from members of the public at this point?
We are, we are taking the comment.
Not in a butter, just a member of the public. I think, uh, I agree with Nate, Sharon, that transparency is incredibly important. Uh, especially in this case, and I would encourage the board to continue the meeting, it can be a very quick meeting in the next one, that's the way to go. Um, having somebody leave here and then talk with uh, Rob, and I respect everybody in this room, but I think in the best interest of transparency, it should be continued.
Thanks, Dan. I do appreciate your chatting me in on that. So, my question to the applicant and to the architect is, um, do you think you can have this work done by, let's see, would be the fourteenth or the twenty-eighth of May?
As you schedule it, Chris.
So, are we? What are you, what are you asking for?
I, I, I'm asking you, okay, I, I think we have we have voted on it, but I think the board has decided that we're gonna lean towards continuing the hearing. And rather than have the board set an arbitrary date in the motion that somebody is going to make, uh, because we have to continue it to a time certain, a date and time certain. Um, I'm asking you and Eric whether you can get this work done by the fourteenth of May, which is our next hearing date, or the twenty-eighth, which is the one following. Or if you need more time than that.
And is the license surveyor requirement being, is that being granted in lieu of, uh, in lieu verification of the however you wanna word the western property line?
Yeah.
Yada, yada, yada.
Yeah, and we, we, we have, we have already granted you that waiver.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
So, yes, so that's fine, so, uh, let's put it into there that it is for
Well, it's either the fourteenth. Two weeks.
The fourteenth then.
Fourteen?
That's correct.
So, okay. On the fourteenth, the expectation would be that you come back with documentation about the due diligence that's been conducted about the property boundary and field measurements therefrom and any updated site plan that may or may not result.
That's correct.
Yeah, so my understanding is that we would hire Chris and I'm just, that's what we're gonna do, he'll find the two pins and he'll do whatever arcs, you know, we'll draw a line and then we'll draw arcs and then he'll put them onto the drawing.
Right.
And if adjustments need to be made, that process will be made.
Yeah, and we will, we will, you know, expect that Chris can do that fairly easily. This will be that he could find the pin. And, um, then you guys will come back and if you need to make adjustments to your drawing, you will bring us a new drawing. If you find that the setback line is reasonably where you have indicated it, then you won't do a new drawing. And either way, we should be able to look at your work and make a decision. That sounding correct?
Sounding correct. So we're, we're looking at May fourteenth?
So in that, in that case, I'll, is that right? May fourteenth? May fourteenth.
I will move that we continue hearing P twenty-five oh four oh one to May fourteenth, six thirty P M.
Can we kill my motion first? Vote against my motion?
Okay, um.
I can't withdraw it, cause I'd rather we just
Okay.
Shoot it down.
So, um, Dan's motion, would you restate it please?
My motion was to, uh, can you write?
Yeah, yeah, to approve the major site plan with the condition that the property owner submit to Mr. Taylor an updated site plan showing the proper northwest and northeast points to keep the parking spaces outside of the fifteen foot setback to the property line.
Okay.
And the northwest pin must physically be located.
That is the motion that Dan has made. And Dan is now requesting that we vote on it. So, all in favor, say aye.
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 Can I have a show of hands please? One, two, three, all opposed?
Aye.
One, two, three. Who, no, Linda, you can't vote.
And Eric can't be replaced, so. Motion fails.
Yeah.
Motion fails, three to three.
Motion fails. Would you care to make a new motion?
No, cause Nate wants.
I'll, I'll move to continue the hearing, P twenty-five oh four oh one to May fourteenth at six thirty P M. Right here in this very room.
Okay, Nate has made a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Uh, nay.
Okay, um, motion passes. End of, not end of hearing. Hearing is recessed until the fourteenth of May at seven, six thirty P M.
Continue.
Continue, reset.
Continue, it's not recessed.
It's continued.
Well, thank you.
Okay. Did I, yeah, yeah.
Thank you, Eric.
And some of that actually depends which stage you're in.
I know.
Okay.
Now, you can, you can put Linda back off.
Well, that was the only thing that we're gonna have a, um, a vote on.
Yep.
So, no conceptual. Eric, I'm sure you're mentally exhausted at this point. However, I would love it if you would give your select board report.
Sure, um, a lot of the last meeting was actually going through and, you know, all in the committees cycled through in the spring, uh, so we appointed new members and alternates, including, we'll have a new member, I don't know where I did with the piece of paper. But we'll have a new member joining us and, uh, as soon as, I saw it at the next meeting, uh, as well. And our alternates got reappointed as alternates, okay, so. Uh, that'll set the same, um, other than that, we're mostly business related meeting, trying to get a theme grant for potatoes. Helping projects are going on well, there'll be parking lot paving in June.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I think Rob, that parking lot paving in June, that won't conflict with, um, the meeting June sixth or whatever, will it?
Uh, for the, uh. I sure hope not, it's, it's six.
Jeffrey and brother. Well, that, I, that I'm sure they've got at least, um, on their schedule, but that's a good point as well.
Right.
Uh, but I realize that's a meeting that's non-standard.
I know.
Cause I know he's scheduling for June to have parking lots paved.
Right.
Um, and then, oh, this, well, Rob will talk about it, but the Citizens Academy is starting up, which I think is very exciting, and Rob's put a lot of work in on that. So, I'll leave that there and talk about it.
Okay.
Audio system.
Rob.
Oh, yeah. We're getting an audio system for Whitney Hall.
Citizens Academy, we have seventeen applicants, and we decided to take all seventeen. We had sort of, originally it was gonna be fifteen to twenty, and it's been, well, let's, let's make it fifteen, so it's a nice small group. Seventeen, I thought it was close enough, let's take them all. And so, the thing is gonna start on the twenty-second of May. Um, uh, town manager Ed Morris is gonna be leading the charge to start it out and, uh, there's ten sessions taking us all the way into, uh, winter and, uh, it's gonna be fun, hopefully it'll be a good, good thing, and it's kind of neat to see the list of applicants, um. Several people that we know, but several people that we've never had any interaction with, so I think that's a real good thing and, uh, I think these people will, will learn a lot and, uh, I think the goal is that they come out of it with increased interest and participation, maybe wanna jump on a board or a committee, so that's, uh, it's kind of the goal there and it's, each, each month is a different topic, so it'll be, you know, town office, public works, planning and zoning, public safety.
Need to get a hop grid.
Come on. So that is Citizens Academy, uh, you guys, obviously we're gonna be talking about this weekend, we got some work to do on details there, I don't wanna take up too much time. Uh, uh, the planners conference is on the sixth of June, the venture planners will be in town. We're gonna be sort of, uh, working together with the city of Lab, city lab will be presenting in the morning, we're gonna be in the afternoon, and it will include a walking tour of downtown Enfield, and take them all the way down to Lakeside Park and uh, maybe a tour of Whitney Hall, um, hopefully a stop at the brewery. That is a really exciting thing for you guys, the brewery is actually making beer. Uh, they've made their first batch, I think it's last week, and so they're gonna be making batches every week. Um, it's not open yet in the tasting room, that's for a later date, I think, probably likely July. It's what they're shooting for there, just trying to get, uh, production off to a good start. Um, coffee shop is coming online pretty quick, uh, we've got, actually, we've got a uh, Enfield Village Association event scheduled there for May, so there's definitely a target date for opening, um. Keep your eyes out for that, that's the, like a Friday morning, I can send you guys details on that, that's, that'll be fun to be in there and see how.
Third Friday usually.
Yeah, yeah.
Would be oh, oh, two, sixteen.
I'll keep you guys in the loop on that, uh, if you have interest, um. Exciting news, the, uh, Hale's Garage, you guys may know, it's the red steel building next to Randy's Car Wash and, and Enfield House of Pizza, set back on a little side road there called Hardy Road, but very much on Route Four as well. That has been sold, the buyer is, uh, Woodsville Power Equipment has bought it. Uh, they've been looking at this market to open up a small dealership, they are a, uh, Bobcat dealer. And so they'll bring in Bobcat to the Upper Valley, they also sell Toro. Um, they're, uh, gonna be taking over the Husqvarna line that was at exit seventeen D M B, uh, power.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that's exciting, and I'm sure people that have Husqvarna will be happy to have a place local to get stuff and get repairs done. So they'll be in the C U sometime in the not so distant future, we met with the owner and his wife and, uh, it's a nice business in Woodsville, if anybody's been up on Dartmouth College Highway, it's directly across the street from, uh, Walmart in Woodsville. So, um, kind of excited to see some, some businesses popping up around town, I know that the town manager is very, very pleased, that's sort of a sign, I think, um, that we take as good, good news and so, um, we'll be working with that, you'll be hearing from them, um. I guess that's about all I wanna go, I wanna get Renee home. Been waiting patiently. So any questions, I'm happy to answer any questions for you guys, been very busy, lots of stuff going on. Uh, one property right now that's really dominating my time is a little lakefront down on Chica Boulevard. It's a hundred foot square with no septic, no well, uh, a rundown, um, camp. But it's, it's decent price, like four hundred fifty thousand for waterfront, and it's a nice waterfront, really pretty. Down on the end towards the, uh, sandy bottom part of the lake, so, lot of interest there, very technical. Very, very technical and so, uh, some people, what can I do, what can I do, and so, okay, here's, here's how it's gonna work. Any questions?
Okay, uh, legislative report. Uh, we have not had session for two weeks now. It is crossover season and the senate bills have come to the house, the house bills have gone to the senate. And, uh, committee hearing are happening. Nothing, well, there's a bunch of senate bills that are land use bills. But they did not wind up in municipal and county government for whatever reasons. And we will see what the committee recommendations are, um, when they come out and go up to the full house. Um, among those bills from the senate are the one that Nate flagged at our previous meeting, which is essentially two acre maximum zoning. Which probably works great in Manch- Manchester and Nashua, but, uh, I think there would be a little bit of opposition from the rest of the state. Um.
That's senate bill eighty-four.
Well, thanks Nate.
Yep.
Uh.
You guys can all look it up, it's interesting bill to read.
Yeah. Uh, it also sets, um, maximum lot sizes at a quarter acre if you're on municipal sewer. And half acre if you are on municipal water, do I have that right Nate?
Uh.
I don't think the quarter acres.
I'd have to go back and look at the exact.
Yeah, me too. Um, but i- in any event, it, it does address, uh, more urban size lots.
Two acres with no utilities is what sticks in my mind.
Yeah, it's gonna go, gonna go over well, uh, existing lots are exempt. And, um, it's one more step towards the state telling the towns what they can and cannot do. End of report. Um, I would like to put the minutes aside for the moment because Renee has been here for almost two hours waiting for us to get to Saturday's, um, forum, so.
You're very patient, Renee.
Thank you, Renee.
Yeah, I try, I try, that's, that's good. Um, I, if I may add one comment on the SB eighty-four, I was on a Zoom call the other day, um, with Housing Action New Hampshire, um, but they had a note two on there that, um, again, it is, uh, on the majority of the land in town, two acre, so it doesn't impact the entire town, and they had a number, and I'll get the direct one, but it was upwards of a hundred and fifty plus, I almost gonna say a hundred and seventy, hundred and seventy, um, six is sticking in my head for some reason, uh, communities, towns in New Hampshire already fall into, um, they would be in compliance with this bill of SB eighty-four if it passes. So it doesn't impact a whole lot of, I mean, it impacts some communities, um, but it sounds like a lot of the communities are already in compliance, so. I can, um, I'm gonna look into that some further, cause I'm curious to our region overall, as the U V L S R P C, as how many are communities in our region already comply, um, and we might be happily surprised, and it is forty-four thousand square feet for those um, with municipal community water. Um, so one acre.
That's one.
And then for lots with municipal sewer, twenty-two thousand.
I suspect when the numbers are run, Enfield would be significantly affected by that because such a large portion of the town is conservation zone with the wildlife management area.
I think they only count residential.
Yeah, it's only, only your zones that are residential. Only your residential, one percent of residential, so.
It's not all land area in town, okay?
It's not land area and it's based on lots, I think, not as, not on land area itself.
Um, I think it's based on big question.
Land area of residentially.
Residential, yeah.
It is land.
Maximum lot sizes for single family. Maximum lot sizes for single family residential use in.
That's gonna affect us.
Based on the type of residential. So.
Yeah, which will affect us.
Because, yeah, the largest portions are trees bombs.
Yeah, you, you couldn't do it by lots because they don't exist. I mean, they exist.
They exist sort of, but they, in terms of subdivisions, they have been subdivided.
Anyhow. Yeah, back to the forum.
So, yeah, so Saturday's forum, we've got the uh, who, phone file, I'm sorry. No, I had it up here for so long, sorry. Postcard is sent.
Did you get a postcard?
I got postcards.
You know, I, I was, school vacation last week. I tried, I, I put the little yellow card in my mailbox to hold my mail and have it resume normal delivery on Monday, the twenty-first, but I haven't gotten a single thing. Who knows what's awaiting me? Maybe it'll come at some point, but I did not receive, but I'm glad all.
It's not at the post office.
Would you have even gotten?
I mean, I'm an Enfield, I'm an O three, seven, four, eight zip code. So, we are in the hinterlands on Methodist Hill. We are, we are still technically Enfield.
You know, we can, we send out, we do what we can and sometimes USPS has another mind. So hopefully most of everyone got it. And then I think Rob did put them out at local stores, gas stations, town hall, all that kind of stuff. So they are out. We do also have a flyer and a slash agenda that's been kind of drafted up that we can have at places as well and have the day events. We will have the agenda in hand, kind of the breakout of the day. It's posted on the website. It's been sent out on listserv. So we've got coverage there. So as far as publicity.
Is it posted on the town information board? I haven't looked at the town information.
So yeah, so I think, fingers crossed. And if at least we've spoken to a handful of people that said they will be there. Some of us colleagues in the office, so who are Enfield residents. So trying to spread the word as well, just amongst groups there. Handouts for the tables. We'll have the master plan quotes and supporting document that we discussed. And I believe we discussed this, but it came up in one of our team meetings. It was like the school handout on New Hampshire housing data. I know we said, had mentioned about like in the beginning of the, of the introduction, kind of those non-starters are at the tables reminding folks of the non-starters, parking and school kind of stuff being you know, maybe jot down and while parking lot it, so to speak, and you know, put some comments there. Certainly wanna hear folks' thoughts and comments, but may not be directly related to the topics that we have on the day. So willing to hear that, but it's just, it's, those can be a little convoluted, but we wanna have information available. So the school handout from New Hampshire Housing. They have a flyer, just a one-page, remember it's double-sided, that's helpful with information for folks. The lot layout worksheet, I forgot to bring one, so I apologize. We have those in the office. Couple different ones, kind of a larger one, a smaller one. So those will be on the tables as well. And then summary items from the Main Street Report, which I've gotten some pieces and parts of that and so that will help really support to support, but it has some really good identifying information in there as well, as far as like what Main Street is used for. So when the topic of the downtown comes up, we'll have that as well as housing overall in that area. It has been mentioned and so we're definitely gonna pull some of those out. And again, in support of kind of why we're having this discussion and looking at these zones. So that's where we're at, some of the pieces and parts.
Yeah, we have a question from somebody.
Dave Befay.
From Dave Befay. David, you have a question?
Yeah, I, correct me if I'm wrong Sharon, but I don't believe we, we received any mail either echoing what was said earlier.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, we did.
You got it. Okay, great.
We got it on the sixteenth.
Lovely. All right. That's good to know. Thank you.
We communicate real well in my house.
No, it's okay. It's important. We wanna make sure these things get out and we, again, try as best we can and so try to capture everyone and make sure it's out there. So that's kind of the nuts and bolts pieces of kind of the publicizing, getting out there, getting set up. One question I had logistic wise, are we able to set up on Friday? And I can talk to you about that after if we need to. Okay, okay, perfect. Yeah. Cause any prep, we can get set up. Be great. Does it have, I know we were hoping to, last time we were hoping maybe to run through, how is everyone feeling on their sections and or is there anything you need from me? For support or anything that, yeah, any questions for me or for us?
So just read half of run of show. I've got Dan is gonna start with the master plan. Kind of ten minute overview.
It'll be less than ten.
And Dave is gonna pick up from there.
What do you? What do you have for handouts about the master plan?
Yeah, so we're gonna do Anna has started working on master plan quotes, things pulling out of it, information and we're gonna finalize probably tomorrow and get those printed out. We also discussed at our internal team meeting about it, you know, with not knowing how many folks are gonna be in attendance. We don't wanna overprint handouts. We don't wanna underprint. So how do we balance this? Our thought and open to discussion too is we'll have thirty pages at least. May, over enough for everybody else as well, for the board members and staff. But thirty available for public members, because we kind of had that conversation of thirty people, you know, in each table, blah, blah. So if there are more than that, again, we'll try to do a couple extra just in case. But above and beyond that, we'll have a QR code and we're thinking of trying to get all these pages just in one quick doc. If we can get it posted on the website, then that way it can link to there to a supporting documents for the event. And people can scan the QR code and be able to support. But the master plan specific votes and or any data from the master plan will be incorporated into the page and in the handout.
And what I've got for master plan is up on the screen will be the RSA on the master plan. And also up on the screen is going to be the housing recommendations that came out of the master plan. I'll also be, you know, giving us probably five to six minute.
Going through. Who's putting that up on the screen?
I've got it on.
I'm bringing the projector.
I've got it on.
You wanna get my computer to the.
We can connect to my computer. We can do one of ours. That's fine. Yeah. If we have like thumb drives.
What I've given the presentation will be up there. If you want, we can also make paper copies of this if you want. It's up to you. I wasn't going to, I was just gonna put it up on the screen.
Yeah, I think that's fine.
That's all right. We'll have our one too, which will might have, might have some crossover in there.
Probably does.
Yeah.
Probably does.
So.
So nine to nine fifteen is Dan.
Well, but we need someone to open the show.
Yeah, we're happy to if you want. Let's.
So you're gonna introduce.
I can do introductions. We can do kind of why we're here, quick overview, introduction for the script rules we mentioned. Get some interaction, those first few minutes and then I'll introduce.
You open?
Yeah.
Right.
Introduce Dan. From Dan, we go to, why we're working on this, that's Dave. From nine fifteen to nine twenty-five, then back to RPC staff for housing. Regional Housing Needs Assessment. Then what's called here drafted proposal would be Eric talking about kind of the, the big picture of.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm assuming you've got copies of the map and I'm just gonna go and point at the map.
Yes, and we can have that. I can put that in my slideshow and so we can have that up on the projector and then we're also going to we do have an order of maps that are gonna be printed at Staples and we'll have those done up by Friday morning and have those. So we'll have some of those. How, do you have any requests on size for, and we'll have it on the screen, but.
My plan is to stand at the screen.
Perfect.
I know, sure. I just wanted to make sure you had a copy of the map and we didn't have a picture one.
Yeah, the proposed one, yeah.
We really don't have a drafted proposal. We've got nothing but the map.
But, I mean, that's what's, but that's what you're bringing to the table so far. And I guess that, that can be part of this kind of the forum and the discussion is, this is what we've pulled out from master plan. Here's some reasons why we're looking at the area, why they're proposing these districts. That's the proposal.
Yeah, I, I cover a lot of that in my speech, whatever.
Our discussion.
The proposal in this case is a starting point. He can explain that.
We tried to draw a map around Infield Village based on water and sewer. And we found three sort of distinct areas within the village and here's how we drew them and.
And here we're gonna talk about today whether or not we're on the right track. Current state is Tim.
Yeah, so I don't know what you have prepared for a, a, a visual for that.
So we have, we did do the map. I know we talked about a map highlighting, taking your data for the multifamily. Units that are currently existing and what those units look like, the makeup, you know, one to three, three to six, I think Grace did. So we have that map, supporting current state, using the multifamily, you know, areas that we have. We'll have that, I believe we're gonna do it printed and then we can have that on the screen as well.
Okay. And then
Current state being kind of the existing conditions.
Existing condition.
We have any data on acreages?
Oh, the lot sizes under current acres forum. Yes, I believe we do.
Well, maybe we could just take us some time tonight, but I could communicate with you in the next couple of days. You can show me what you got. So I can make my script fit the. Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. And then the part there's some data about how many people live in the village and what percentage of that is the town population. Where do they live? Somebody live in apartments, somebody live in single-family homes. We have that information. How are these housing units distributed? There so many lots with buildings containing more than one housing unit, so many of the single family homes only. And then I think that's the map and it shows where those single fam- or multifamily homes are distributed. Everything else is single family.
Where water and sewer currently are located.
Yeah.
So I, I was gonna double check with you guys. You guys have a la- the layers on the G I S. I'm just thinking, we can just put that up on the screen, project that up and just zoom in on that area and it pretty much highlights it. But I think Grace found an older layer, but I think your G I S ones is just fine if you guys are amenable to that.
All right, so similarly, get through that stuff real quick. I wanted to just do a quick existing zoning ordinance summary, really, really summary. Basically just talking about how the minimum lot size is, the R one and, you know, what if you got sewer and just R.
Yeah, good.
Still working on that part. I don't think I'll need any handouts for that. It's straightforward. Yep, done.
All right. Then we go on break and we come back to our tables. And there will, if I'm recalling this correctly, there will be either three or six tables on three subjects. Who is staffing those tables? Is that all RPC staff?
So there will be at least three of us there on Saturday and then we were had discussed briefly, I think, last time was that some of you planning board members would also be at each table to either, you know, kind of facilitate the prompt questions, have discussions and or like scribe or be there. So our goal is that one planning board member, one staff person, that's a three. I might see if another colleague can come so we can have a fourth just in case, but I'm just waiting back to here on schedule. But.
Who is going to do that from the board?
Say, yeah, who's willing to be at a table?
Facilitating and, and.
Discussion and prompting questions and yeah, I mean, I think you guys I feel like are pretty well.
Well, we, we, we know the subject.
Yeah, yeah.
I, 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 I think, you know, we're gonna just rise to the occasion because we know the subject.
What were the three topics, the three titles?
The downtown, Enfield Village and Route Four. We were basically just dividing it out by the districts and kind of focusing on each table. And then we were gonna have so many minutes and then move to the next table so that you could, everyone gets a chance at each zone. For the, for the, for the public. I think and it's up to discussion too, if, I think our thought process was the staff and the planning board member would stay at that specific table all the rounds so that the consistency is there and then when we do the report outs.
So we will need three volunteers. Each of those three are gonna be camped out in the same place for the entire. You're not rotating the three.
The three people.
The three people. So Dan.
Or it could be two of us at a table or it's up to you. I mean, if, there's gonna be at least six of us there, I suspect.
Yeah, I would, I would think that'd be the thing to do is just divide us up amongst the three venues.
All right, yeah. Okay, we can do that on the fly.
Whoever shows up, we'll divide them up.
Okay.
And I think too, at the beginning of that, we had kind of a few minutes. I mean, I think a buffer between getting break and settled back in. And then also like, I'm happy to give an overview of kind of what's gonna happen next. Go to tables. You're all gonna have your color stickers on your name tags. This is why, surprise, because you're gonna go to a table so that we kind of mix up the bunch a little bit. And give kind of overview of what we're gonna do at the table.
Also wanna mix up select board members to show up. We don't want three select board members at one table. We want them at separate tables.
So, yeah.
So the, the report outs would then be by either the RPC staff person at each table or the RPC staff person plus a planning board member, you know, whoever the case may be. I mean, the, the, the scribe and facilitator will be reporting out on behalf of that table. Here's what we heard.
Two-minute cap recap on like what we saw, what
What we heard.
What we wrote, what rose up in the conversation. Yeah, exactly.
And then who closes with the next steps and, and like, there was a wrap up and.
Final thoughts and questions. Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to do some of that and then if anyone else has something that they wanna share or we can open it to a couple of ending thoughts.
Yeah, I, I like at, at least I, I will do this, just me, but I almost like to see the whole board just, okay, what did I hear today? What were the two things that stuck in my mind?
That may be.
Good idea.
The RPC does the, the forum and then planning board comes together at the end and says, okay, this is what we heard also.
Now, maybe that's, we haven't really digest this information.
Well, no, but these are some ideas that are new ideas to us.
But at least one thing each of us.
Right, at least one thing that each of us came out with.
But also, I mean, in that fifteen minutes, we wanna talk about you know, the we're, we're preparing a draft, you know, we will take this feedback and prepare a draft and we will have that draft ready by X, you know, time in the summer. And this will be the last that you hear of this. There'll be more opportunity to weigh in on the draft when the, th- those kind of key points about how this gets to town meeting next year.
We've also gotta be cognizant.
SB two elections next year, I guess.
Of the first hour. Cause that first hour could drag into the next hour with questions. And we really don't want to lose that forum time. Now, if it's, if it's fifteen minutes per with three tables and you're only talking forty-five minutes. But if it becomes four tables or five tables, then you may have, you may run into. If you're not starting directly at ten fifteen.
So we're talking about twenty minutes per table, then rotate twenty minutes.
Fifteen and rotate.
And well, um, I think in part of the setting the stage and the introductions and all of that will also be. You know, we definitely want to mention and highlight that. We're thankful for everyone being there and, you know, aware of the time and the volunteer in the time of their Saturday morning. So we want to make this as productive as possible and we understand as we go through these first opening parts and information, there may be questions. Um, and we'll have again, I think at the tables, we're gonna have pieces of papers, we're gonna have post-it notes. Please jot it down. Um, but, you know, first. And he was on time. We want to be respectful of everyone and so we're happy to hear those and take those later for consideration too. Um, but definitely want to stay on task.
Renee, would it be helpful if one of your staff people is publicly appointed as timekeeper?
I was thinking that, yeah, I think at the, yeah, I think during the first hour, we'll definitely have a time watcher. Um, and then for the tables, I think, you know, each of us staff wise, we'll try to keep on the, for the, yeah. And be like, you've got, you've got two minute warning and then, yeah, yeah, went to switch, so.
Comment on the screen, which I guess goes to the last two lines will before be recorded. And I don't think we have any plans to do that because that room is just very, very difficult.
Yeah.
There's no way to record breakups.
Right, yeah, that too.
That's hard part. It would really just be that first hour.
Document everything we, all the data that we collect.
Yeah.
You could maybe film the first section and wrap up.
Yep. Yeah, we could probably do that.
They can still get a recap on that part.
The owl would be.
Well, that's what I mean.
Do we, do we have a video camera?
Nope.
Not that I'm aware of. However.
Okay.
How were the other ones?
It's not going.
That it's not, it's not gonna happen. It's just not gonna happen. We don't have the personnel. We don't have the equipment.
Right.
And that's just the way it is.
That's an in-person.
Yeah.
Yeah, and happy to, certainly again, we'll have all the supporting documents online too. That's a goal of ours is to. You know, have that there posted online so everyone can have the supporting documents. Um, as to what we're discussing and kind of again, all those pieces and parts of the printouts and handouts. And then happy to, you know, take questions or anything like that can certainly reach out to our office. And I'm happy to chat with folks outside too. We do have some time for that, so. And then again, there will be the, um, the callback, right? So as Nate mentioned, the fall, you know, maybe late summer, early fall. Um, I think we had talked about. Because originally in your, in the application for you guys, you had two community forums and then with the downscaling of the grant. It kind of nixed one of those and so I think we had looked at trying to do like a planning board workshop, right? Like your meeting night, maybe, maybe you hold it there too instead of in here and just invite folks there to kind of be like, hey, we had that. Here's our second meeting that we discussed. The callback. Yeah, so. Something to think about.
Um, I may have missed this in the conversation too. Sometimes that means I realize that Zoom is, is really challenging and I heard you come talking about that already. Um, but my question is some, at some meetings, there have been somebody out there who does a recording. And sometimes isn't there some sort of infield public YouTube TV or something channel? I'm not.
Not anymore.
It's.
Not anymore. It doesn't happen. The town decided not to fund it anymore.
Oh, yeah, okay. Because that was just a thought that I had.
It's a good thought, but.
I think what you end up seeing on YouTube is comes from.
The owl.
Yeah.
The is the team.
We, we used to have, um, somebody who would actually be here.
Right.
And that would go on the public access Comcast channel. But that is no longer.
Sorry.
Okay.
Sorry. Thank you.
Yeah.
Last meeting, we had talked about. Online survey where people who didn't come could basically checkbox. Um, a whole bunch of different uses.
Yeah.
For each of the three areas. Is that ready to go or will it be?
It will be. We're just about wrapping up some of that. Was there a tie, like it was pretty, I remember it's gonna be like pretty short. We're not gonna, I mean. The uses, but was there anything else the board had that they wanted kind of added into that? Or was it just pretty much the, the uses and the districts? Okay.
If, if you could get that to Barbara Jones or Blink.
Yep.
And we'll have her post it. I'll find out once she can do it, whether she'll do it on Saturday or have to wait until Monday. Okay, Dr. Buffet. David.
Having, having done a, a few meetings that were broadcast in that building. It's not as complicated as you're making it sound. Um, a laptop camera and a mic are all that you would need for. Um, the group things you might, when you're summarizing the breakouts. Um, if, if the people doing that were using that same mic and, and, and video, you could record that easily. It's just different than what you have considered in the past. Thank you.
Do we have somebody who could set it up and do it? And I would, I would think that with the screen and people are gonna be. Standing and pointing at the screen. It's not the kind of thing that you could do with a laptop. People agree, disagree?
I agree. Forum. This is an in-person forum.
And the microphones on the individual breakouts, you know, and has to get passed around and it's gonna get, people are gonna get.
Even if, even if we're just summarizing the individual breakouts, it's.
This is an in-person forum.
It's gonna, it's gonna be tough. And logistically, it just sounds too challenging with everything else that we have to do. And the people that we don't have to devote to videotaping or audio visual, so. That's where we are. Anything else for today?
I'm sorry about that. I wish we could make it happen to the people, but I think. Uh, you know, again, happy to, we'll have the touring documents and happy to have a conversation afterwards if someone wants to, you know, provide input and. Um, be a part of the process, happy to collect that information for sure and put that kind of in the, in the bowl, if you will, in the mix. Um, the other thing I had was, um, refreshments. I know we talked about, there was a connection some time previously from Jake's. I don't know if we still have that connection or how we wanna, is there anything?
Rob, Rob has.
Okay.
Rob has volunteered.
Coffee and donuts, I think is the.
Okay.
Secret.
Okay. It's like, yeah, the thing is, it'd be just, yeah, nice to have something there in the morning. People come.
Really pretty good recipe.
Yeah.
Renee, you, you are gonna set up either Friday evening or come in early.
Yeah.
What time would you like the members of this board to appear? Certainly before eight forty-five.
Yeah, I'd say eight thirty would be great. Um, and last request I had was, uh. Tablecloth for the tables. If anyone has at home an extra tablecloth laying around, I wouldn't mind bringing it in. Um, again, it just kind of helps that welcome inviting, so.
You mentioned Friday night setting up. Is that something you'll need help with?
I don't know what time yet, but, um, we can, what's that?
I'll work on it with you.
We'll see your time and we can send out if you guys can make it great. If not, it's okay. Yeah, um, I think, yeah, I just have school pick up, but I'm, I think, um. Yeah, we can make something, we'll make something work and we'll let you guys know. I'm happy to. I think Anna can also come on Friday and help too. So we'll have at least myself and Anna to help set up. So we have our fresh ones. We've got the tables will get set up ahead of time. Um, sounds like we've all got our ten minute kind of rundown, um, eight to ten minutes. And yeah, we're gonna bring the supplies. We have our checklist at the office, our team, um, all the supplies, pens, papers, post-it notes, name tags. Um, all of that. So we'll be bringing that. Is there anything else?
Question.
Sure.
Will there be a second opportunity for refreshments during that fifteen minute break?
Break.
Stuff available.
I, I, I'm saying this so that Rob can give an appropriate amount of. He'll be running across the street to Jake.
Save two dozen donuts for the second break.
So, yeah, um. And I think, yeah, we'll have the maps printed up. And then we discussed, uh, I guess you want to confirm the maps printed, the proposed zoning district. We have that map. We'll have it printed slightly larger, um, for the tables and or on the wall next to the tables. Um, we'll see how that is like layout kind of goes, but. Um, we'll have those available for PC nearby them. Uh, a few of those printed up.
Do we want to have enough small ones for people to like make edits and?
Right, do we want to have? Eight half by eleven?
Yeah, right.
Okay.
Yeah, good, because it's a lot easier after the fact to look through a stack of things that people drew on and to try to remember.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's true. We can have some so that people can be like, oh, actually I'd love to, yeah, what if it was this way?
Is there a fallback plan if we get fifty or seventy-five people?
And then we just end up going down to, um, instead of two planning board members at each table, we'll have to diversify to one.
Yeah.
Yep.
Friday afternoon, that's, that's what.
Wide open, okay.
Can get in there on Friday.
Perfect.
And we're the only rental on Saturday, so.
Oh, awesome.
What, what's available downstairs? I forgot.
That's right. We talked about.
There's a, there's a meeting room that's probably enough for fifteen people.
Oh, yeah.
Easily, yeah, if we need the space.
Well, you guys can figure that out Friday, but I think you should look at that.
Yep.
It would just help keep.
It's a conference room. Yeah, that conference room is already set up.
Yeah, so overflow if we needed more space for the sixty, seventy, yeah, folks.
David, well, I would use it just as a force, because.
Oh, oh, separating.
Third people and you get ten each, you know.
Yeah.
It gets people, yeah, it gets people moving in between too.
Okay, true.
Now, there may be some people that are, uh, mobility challenged.
There's a, yeah, they can use.
There's an elevator.
Use the elevator if they have to.
Dr. Buffet, another comment?
Just a second. Are you there? Okay.
We're here.
The, uh, that downstairs conference room could easily handle, um, two eight foot tables. Um, and they wouldn't be real acoustically separated, but neither of those upstairs. Um, and, uh, um, you know, the elevator is slow, but it works.
Yep.
Good, thank you. Anything else?
We're ready.
Okay. Are people, are people interested in doing the meet, the minutes tonight? Or do we want to just put them off until?
Let's put them off because with these not here.
I think that's a good idea.
Her husband had a work emergency threatening her. Yeah.
We're done.
You mean I need to make the motion that we adjourn? I can't, I'm motion adjourned.
Somebody want to second it?
Second.
We can stay here all night.
Second.
All right, motion made and. I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Sharon. Okay, well, we're, we're making motions to adjourn here. So if you have a comment, I'm willing to take it now.
Hey, we take those too.
We definitely take those.
And, um, this forum that you're gonna have, I sat here and listened to all the, the work that you've had to do for this. And, um, thank you for doing it. There's that. The second compliment that I have that's even greater. Of all of these meetings I've attended in a year or two, this was the first night. That anyone ever talking about regulations, ever, anybody ever cited a regulation. Or looked up a regulation or had a regulation on screen for the rest of the table to see and for the public to see as well. So thank you for that news and I hope to see you in the future.
Awesome.
Thank you.
I know we have referred to regulations, perhaps they, those were meetings when you were not in attendance. But, um, yeah, we'll try to, we'll try to do more. All right. Linda has joined us, so we have to do a roll call.
Yep, let's do a roll call.
Okay, Linda, this is the motion to adjourn.
I agree.
Eric.
Hi.
Hi. Dan.
Hi.
Tim. Hey.
Hi.
Bill, David. Unanimously are adjourned at eight fifty-six.
All right.
Thought it was gonna be a long meeting. I just didn't expect.